Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is Tuesday, September 7th. It is about 7:35 PM. This is a Planning and Zoning Commission general meeting. And we also have anything else on that? Tonight, we are in Jeremy Ginsburg and myself, planning director, in room 213 here in Town Hall. And the meetings also be hung virtually via go-to meeting as per the governor's orders. So to get right into it, the first item of the agenda is a mandatory referral number 2-2021, Board of Selectmen, 27 Crimmans Road, request for report regarding purchase of 27 Crimmans Road property. We have a memo in our files from Kate Bush to Jeremy Ginsberg. To Jeremy Ginsberg. You guys might have read about this appears, but I'll let Jeremy tell us what's going on.
Sure, this is a mandatory referral is a requirement under section 8-24 of the Connecticut statutes. In a case where the town is either purchasing, selling, leasing land, or making a substantial improvement to land, they need a report from the Planning and Zoning Commission on the consistency with the town plan of conservation and development. Our latest town plan of conservation and development is from 2016. I believe each commission member somewhere along the way got a copy. And what we do is prepare a report based on the consistency. In this case, the proposal is pretty straightforward. There is a property with a house on it over at 27 Crimmans, which is very close to Stony Brook, just downstream from Town Hall here. The proposal is for a FEMA grant to pay a portion of the purchase price and the town of Darien to pay the remainder. In this case, once you issue a report, it goes before the RTM. And the RTM is scheduled to meet on this matter, I believe, later this month or early next month, maybe even later this month, to vote on it. If you issue a positive report, it only requires a majority of the RTM to approve it. If you write a negative report, it takes a two-thirds vote of the RTM to approve it. So in this case, town administrator Kate Bush, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, has submitted a memo with the request. She submitted actually a copy of a page from the town plan of conservation and development, noting that in her belief it's consistent. I started to draft a report, you know, sometimes we can kind of get a sense that this might be consistent or not consistent. So with that, I can answer any questions you may have about what the proposal is all about.
Okay, a little bit of background. We've done this before. There was a couple of houses on Cherry Street. I think there was two or one.
One on Cherry. It might even be one on Hacker.
Yeah. That during one of the last big flood times in the life of Darien, the same thing happened. A lot of instances, they lift these houses out of the flood zone, which mostly happens in the bay. And other times, the town has purchased the property. In the instance of the one that's here on Cherry Street, it actually backs up to Renshaw Field, which is the Bay Boos, not Renshaw Field.
Crimmans. Cherry backs up the whole hand.
Whole head field, which is the.
Adjacent to town property.
Yeah, which is the Bay Boos baseball field. So we just got in looped into that. And I think the other one that you spoke about.
Is next to a piece of open space.
Next to a piece of, oh, sorry, on Hacker.
Crimmans is on the other side. It's kind of in the middle of houses. It's not adjacent to any town property.
It actually behind it is a, is what a retention fund. Do you look in the area? There's a retention, there's a depression down there. So what this is, it's not something we have not done in the past. It's something that we've done a couple of different times since I've been on the board. And if you look at Kate Bush's memo, it says, addressing water quality and flooding, support personal properties within floodplain areas as open space, including using private, public-private partnerships, FEMA grants and other approaches. That's exactly what we're doing. Just for the commission's edification, if you look at the leaders, what's FEV again?
Flooding Rose Control Board.
Yeah, that's what.
That's the EPC.
It's EPC.
In this case, the Board of Selectmen is really taking the ball because they have to come up with the money.
The board's signature approved. So any questions, comments on that? I think it's a great idea. It's consistent with the town plan. But I would make a recommendation, go forward with this.
You can draft the report.
Jim Rand, want to go first? Any questions, comments?
Not particularly. I mean, we're, our mandate or remit does not only, it only requires us to comment on the proposal visa be the town plan.
Exactly. If it's consistent with the town.
Dollars for this house or whatever. That's not what we're supposed to do.
Correct. If it's a million bucks for the house and we think that's crazy, that's not in our purview, that's, it's out of, it's somebody else's decision.
I have no, I have no adverse comment.
George Riley, any questions on this one?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. And Jeff Ball, welcome. I want to give you an introduction later, but you're the newest commissioner. We sworn to the commission. This is going to be a new item for you. Have any questions on this?
So what happens with the land now, once it's purchased by the town?
Yeah, it's a good question, Jeff. As part of the FEMA grant, that there's an obligation to take down the house because that's what FEMA is basically buying is the fact that they will no longer have to ensure this house that's in the flood zone. So they're saving, what they're thinking is they're saving the long-term costs. And you just put it back to grade and put some grass seed down and part of the commitment for the purchase is it must remain open. We can't put a structure on it.
It's open space.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. So with that said, I guess we take a straw vote of make a report, a positive report.
Have staff draft a report.
Fantastic. Guess what? We're going to ask staff to draft a positive report for this and we have one. Okay, pops, it's stated, stated today, mandatory referral, possible acquisition of 27 in Crimmans Road with FEMA grant funding. Report deadline is September 21st. I don't need to read the whole thing. But it says at the end, the commission hereby finds that the proposal described in the August 18th, 2021 memo, which is what you guys all have, from the town administrator Kathleen Bush is consistent with 2016 town plan of conservation goal. Okay. And when I first heard this report, I thought it was like pages. This is two paragraphs. Okay, all set?
Vote, everyone in favor?
It's a motion to approve this report as drafted. George Riley made the motion. Jeff Ball, Jim Rand made the second, all is in favor.
Four zero.
Or nothing, done. Thank you. That's finished. Next item on the agenda. Special permit number 301, Darien Parks and Recreation Highland Farm, 516 Madison Road. Requested one time exception to exceed the maximum number of parked vehicles on the site and associated with a planned fall special event established by the special permit for Highland farms. We have a memo in our packet from Ms. Jamie Gore to Fred Donahue and Pam Gary. I think it's on Pam, there's Jamie. I think it's on Pam Gary's knee. There's Pam. Hi Pam, nice to see you again.
Hello.
At the end of the day, it's, they're asking for us to regulations. This one event, I think in, we did the original resolution in the plan for this, we did it for, it was supposed to be a joint thing between Ox Ridge, they wanted to have a wedding that they could park on your site. And then you can park on their site and have maximum things, but after the event comes up, you're supposed to come in front of the P and Z commission. That's exactly what you do. So before you go, we asked you guys, did you want anything, Gerald? Fred Donahue, there he is. Go ahead, Fred, tell us what's going on.
Yeah, so Parks and Recreation came to us several weeks ago with a request to hold a special event called Rocktober Fest, from what we understand, up at Highland Farm, which is going to consist of several bands, some art vendors, some food trucks, some additional activities on the site for October 2nd. The times of the event is from noon to about 6:00 PM. And they've requested an exception to the number of parked vehicles that can occupy the site for a special event in 2019. The commission approved up to 240, I believe. Yes, 240 vehicles, vehicles could be parked on the site for a special event. Parks and Recreation, Jamie and Pam came to us with this request, asking for a maximum parking of 400 vehicles for this event. And that's really what is in front of the commission tonight and what the commission needs to consider in terms of parking for this particular event. Both Pam and Jamie are here tonight. If they wish to expand on any of this, or if the commission has any questions of them, they're certainly here to answer questions.
Expand on that a little bit if I can.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Pam Gary, planning. You are the Art Direct Director. Welcome.
Yes, thanks. So in 2020 and 2021, our events and programs have been just exploding. And people are looking for things to do in town. And for instance, Jamie just held her third Weed Beach festivity. And they filled every single piece of property at Weed Beach to get people in. I mean, when we went to physically stand on the Highland Farm property, it is just so large and expansive that when we look at our footprint of what, where our stage will be, based on our last event last year, when we had very extremely limited amount of people, we realized that, I mean, hey, we're going to throw to that and you're going to spend town money. We want all the residents, as many residents as possible, to be able to attend. And with parking, we're doing a parking fee. And with the amount of parking spaces we were allowed by the application, it is so limiting to us to try to pay for the entertainment that we have and all the expenses that we have for the site. So when we carved out an additional square on the property that would allow for the maximum of 400 cars, we just feel that it's a huge benefit to our program and our community event. Jamie, do you want to add something?
Um, well, I just wanted to make sure they understood that we knew this would be concerning since obviously you determined that 240 was a good number. So we met with both the Fire Marshal Bobby Bush and Captain Marin at the Police Department, who I worked with on all of our community events. And they both gave kind of their blessing of our plan that we came up with on, we were going to park cars based off the map that we provided planning and zoning. And they think it'd work for emergency access as well as just traffic flow under the consideration that we would have three police officers, which we have agreed to, to do. So, and we would have one entrance and one exit, which would also continue traffic flow. So I just wanted to make sure you all knew that we had gotten to that extent. And they also suggested we do parking passes, which we're happy to do. So it would almost be a similar traffic plan to the fireworks, which we have a lot more people than we are anticipating being able to facilitate at this event, but it's a good, it's a good plan. And also just lastly, you know, with the 240, we're going to need a lot of volunteers and/or staff to even make this happen. In addition to all of our other expenses, we need to park those people who are willing to come and give their time. And so we are taking that into consideration. So some of these parking spots aren't even going to be parking spots. We're just trying to facilitate the amount of people that we're going to need on site to make it happen.
It says, I think the events that I've seen are really attended by a lot of young families. I mean, I still think I'm young, but my kids are in college. But so a bunch of little fidgets run around at these events, which is great to see. Just as a matter of, I guess precedence is the proper word. We do this a lot for the fireworks at the high school. We also do it, it's also done at back to school night at the high school. I've got stuck on that, where you go to that, where you park on the tennis court field. We also recently approved it two weeks ago from Mather Farms for their event, the West Centennial. Another, another big event. So. Yeah, it's one time shot that these guys do it. And if the parking department, the police department approves it and the fire department approves it, I think, you know, all the bases are covered. Questions, comments, ready commissioner on this one? Jim Rand, you want to go first since you're the nearest neighbor?
Justice, for my own edification, who owns the property on the other side of Stephen Mather?
On the other side of Stephen Mather?
On the other side of Jensen Road or Ox Ridge Lane?
Stephen Mather's further up the, up the street. That's near.
Major Homestead or, or Highland Farm?
I misspoke. I withdraw my question.
Okay. Now that you're thinking of the other farm. Yep. Carrie, you want to add something?
I just had to, I had to spread this earlier. I couldn't really, from the materials provided to us, I had difficulty figuring out from the landscaping plan where, because it was a handwritten, where the additional parking would be. Because I saw from the emails going back and forth that on-street parking is not permitted within the logistics and the, you know, the width of Middlesex Road. So your parking is not being considered at the Ox Ridge Hunt Club. Is that correct?
Not at this time. That was a last ditch effort that we discussed, but we have not gone down that road.
Okay. So where will, where is the parking? Because I'm looking at the diagram. I'm just some of it was faded probably with copies that we got. So I was having a hard time like figuring out on the picture that I have, where you anticipate putting the extra cars?
No, that's, that's very fair. I'm sorry.
Want me to go over it?
Oh, sure.
Okay, Carrie, if you look at this diagram. Okay, there's one area marked A. It says 80 cars. It's to the.
I mean, I can see it on the diagram. I mean, at the location, where is that? I can see it on the picture. I can see A. I can see on the picture where they're putting.
That's, that's the parking lot nearest to the Hunt Club.
The 80 cars, not the 40, and then what's the 46? Because the parking lot.
The 46 cars represents the current permanent parking lot.
Okay, so then 80 cars is going to be on the grass location next to that parking lot.
Yes, ma'am. And that's approved overflow parking location that we are permitted to use.
And then the other 40 cars at C, that's next to the other permanent parking lot, yeah?
Yes, ma'am. Down that, that like roadside against the wall.
And you see A.
Middlesex Road, the Hot Ox Ridge Road.
It's Middlesex. It wraps around.
Middlesex and Middlesex.
They're both Middlesex.
It makes a curve.
Okay. But that's the side that then has like, where, okay. So there's going to be 40 cars and then just parking for 100 cars.
Where? That would be on the actual interior of the grass because our event isn't big enough at this point in time to extend that far down. So we would create a parking lot area in that corner that we aren't utilizing anyway.
Well, the lots are marked A, B, C, and D.
So C, between C and D, the sort of why they're considered different areas is because of the path?
Yes, ma'am, exactly. Yeah, the path is delineating those areas.
Okay. So this is, so A, B, A, D, and C, so that whole corner area is going to be parking?
Yes, and that's pretty much the area that we are permitted to use. We're kind of using, we're utilizing that interior areas are additional parking. That's kind of what we're requesting to use essentially. I know there's a little bit of a differentiation there, but essentially that's the idea.
And so then all the cars will come in that parking lot, the permanent parking that is closest to the Ox Ridge Hunt Club, and then they will all exit on the other one closest to, I don't know, that intersection with like Mansfield.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That, I just needed help sort of understanding.
It's very fair. I'm not an artist.
Oh, no, it's not you. It was me, basically. Like, I'm not good. I'm good with like things written. I think I need help.
Well, it's really challenging too. If Google Maps would update, it would be a lot easier to do this. It was actually pretty challenging, but this was kind of the thematic that we're working off of with the pack.
No, this is fine. It's, it's, I have difficulty. I need things, I need help. So I appreciate that. And then I also, I just want to say, I thought it was helpful that in the emails, you guys went over with Fred, break down and set up times. And so that's, oh, cool. And then, no concern. I know they have signs up at the Ox Ridge Hunt Club, you know, with the other events about, you know, spooking and sort of our neighbor horses.
So I, I've already been in communication with them and they've given their blessing for this event. They, they gave us a couple of like requests that we will accommodate, but otherwise they, they are aware and have given their blessing.
Those are my questions. Thank you. Sounds great. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Jeff Ball, you're welcome, Carrie. Jeff Ball, any questions?
No questions at this time.
Thanks, bud. With that said, we take a vote on this?
Yeah, everyone's all set.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion to approve this request as submitted. Carrie Gately made the motion. Jim Rand made the second, all is in favor. Have a great event. Save me a ticket. I'll pay my parking fee.
Thank you, everybody.
I know I'll sign up late, though.
Okay, I got it right. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Next item on the agenda, landfilling reguni application number 338A, Marcy. It's Mr. and Mrs. Marcy at 5 Topo Hill Road, request for the release of a $10,000 bond. Jeremy, what do we got?
Sure, some commission members, some of you may recall, this was regrading application that was approved by the commission four and a half years ago, January 2017. And one of the conditions of approval was a bond of $10,000, which can only be released with the approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The regrading's been done for a while. And engineer Craig Flaherty, who's here on the meeting call, has submitted a September 1st, 2021 letter and photographs and details about how he has reviewed the grading that was done and find that it's substantially consistent with what was approved by the commission. Two most affected downhill neighbors have both sent in a letter saying they're comfortable with it. Stable. And it's not causing erosion. So staff would recommend that the commission release the $10,000 bond because the work is completed and stable.
Fantastic. If you read the zoning resolution that was in your pocket, the item in question is on page four. It's finding number, I think, C6.
Yep.
Actually, yes, it's really, it's C6. Where it says you have to get the neighbor's permission next door before you can release the bond. If you look at the site plan, that's in Craig Flaherty's letter from September 1st, 2021. There's a survey that's dated February 2020. If you look at the downhill side, which is top of your page, there is Mr. Romanowski and, Mr. and Mrs. Romanowski and Kathleen Jabor. And if you look at the last page of Craig's letter, the letter is signed by those two people that are Ryan Romanowski and Michael Jaber. So the neighbors signed off on it. This was a very sensitive application at the time. I was on the commission at the time. It actually started with two, Topo Hill Road, one Topo Hill Road, which is next door. They had issues and then this one had issues. The guy Freddie, Freddie's Landscaping was the applicant, I think, at the time, back in 2017. And I read all the documentation and they did exactly what they had to do. And as part of the documentation, part of the resolution, it has to be certified by an engineer before we can release anything. And that's what Craig Flaherty did. So I think they're all in line. Craig, do you have anything to add? I see that you're on the call, but you can do anything to add to this?
I don't. That was a good summary.
Okay. Questions, comments, anything from any commissioners? Kara's saying no. George Riley, it's okay. Jim Rand, it's okay. And Jeff Ball moved. You okay, Jeff?
I guess so. I mean, this is way before my time, so.
Yeah, it is before your time, but if you read the resolution, it says what they have to do and they did.
Correct. Yep, understood.
Okay. With that said, I would entertain a motion to approve the request to certify and release the bond. Jim Rand made the motion. Look for a second. Jeff Ball made the second, all is in favor. He jumped you, Kara. Sorry, man.
Good night.
Craig. Mr. Marcy's here? Fantastic. Okay. Craig, call me tomorrow. That's next item on the, on the agenda, deliberations and possible decisions on the following. Over the month of August, I think Fred and Jeremy and others in their office wrote up a gazillion resolutions that we all voted on before. That's what we designed it. So we have, I think, one, two, seven, two, six of them to go through. So if you guys read them and got typos or scripters errors, great. I just want to blow through them and then we'll see anything comes up. The first one we have is special permit application number 34K, site plan, landfilling and regrading application number 510, Woodred Country Club, 540 Hoyt Street. This is where they're going to pop out the back of the clubhouse and add some different terraces at different levels for outdoor seating. The presentation was a month ago and I don't think we had too many questions. So if you have any questions, comments, scripters errors, typos to this document, let me know. Okay. I did not see anything. It looks pretty straightforward. I know Jeremy and Fred read it a couple of different times, as did I.
You know, I got to say, in, in the old days, you always knew there was something hidden in these drafts. But I read, I can't find anything.
Donna used to find typos all the time. I can't find anyone. That's why I look at Kara. She's my, she's my draft person. Nothing, no typos, no nothing. Brad, you raised the bar, man. All right. With that said, I'm intention a motion to approve as submitted. George Riley makes a motion for a second. Jim Rand's got the second, all is in favor. Five, nothing. Woodways done. Next item up for bid. A special permit application number 117 FS and Frank Site Plan, Rotten Presbyterian Church, 210 Boston Post Road. This is the application where they want to put a deck on the ground that's next to the white building and next to the basketball court or sports court that we approved a month ago. So it's a deck that's on the ground. It is raised a little bit. It sits inside, it's up on piles, which are incinerated tubes. And we approved it. We also putting, put it here, kept in here, the hours that the court can be used. We didn't want people playing basketball on this thing at 10 o'clock at night with lights on it. So with that said, looking for questions, comments, scripters errors, typos. Yeah, if you look on page three, item number F talks about the hours that they can use the basketball, the area, the sports court, I'll call it basketball court. And it differs between summer and fall or summer and winter. the, the basketball, the area, the sports court, I'll call it basketball court. And it, it differs between, um, summer and fall or summer and winter. Okay. Everybody admit it. They found anything or did try anything? Do no comments. I would enter in a motion to approve as submitted. Kara Gately's going to make the motion. Look for a second. Jim Rand's got the second. All those in favor? And church has their new deck. So their basketball court or sports court. Okay.
I, I know we approved, but don't they still, they still need a building permit for the deck? This is just a special, right, permit? Okay.
Yep. After we approve it, then they go across.
Condition I.
Yep. Well, they got the, we are the zoning permit. They need building.
Yep, yep.
Um, yeah, I think the house that they built next to this is almost done. It's all framed out. Yeah, it's good. Um, next item is landfilling and recreating, uh, land, uh, landfilling and regating application number five oh seven Cynthia Heck at, uh, fifty-seven Greenleaf Road. This is where they're putting in a pool. Is that right?
Pool and a pool house. You recall, it, it's a pretty good site, pool house. So we included a number of details regarding the pool house. Finding number three on page two and condition E, which is really saying it's a pool house at this time, it can't be used to rent it out or cooking facilities or anything. We've tried to be as clear as possible with what's allowed in that pool house.
If you remember, we talked about people trying to, um, staying there for an extended period of time. It's like, you know, possible guest house for Thanksgiving weekend or something like that. And all that stuff got baked into here. And moving back and forth, we wanted to make sure it was, it was consistent with what the, our town plan, our regulations already say. But at this point in time, we have no ADUs. Yep, go ahead, Jim.
Uh, that was going to be my question. Uh, i- if the ADO, A- ADU.
Regulation.
A fact of life. They can use this as, this would qualify as an ADU.
Yeah.
Standards are. We don't know what the standards will be, Jim. That's a good question. They would have to come back to the commission potentially.
The standard that's in the state regulation, we're going to get into that later, is like a thousand square feet uh, or thirty percent of whatever's smaller. So I think this thing's bigger than a thousand feet. But, but, you know, we'll get into that later, but we haven't set the standards yet.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yep. Any other questions, comments, scripters errors? Kara Gately?
Well, that was kind of my question as well is right, we're approving the application to regrade and build, you know, put in all this stuff. But on the plans for the proposed pool house, and, and it's in the draft resolution, rooms, you know, showing bedrooms and kitchens and right, it's my understanding that full bedroom, like full kitchens are currently not permitted.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, so we are not approving.
Yeah, requiring that the label be taken off the floor plan.
Oh, no, it could be on the floor plan. I don't care what, you know, but it just can't be, right, we're we are not approving those site plans with things that are currently not permitted by our regs.
That's correct. Everything you're approving is permitted. Uh, we say that there are pool houses that get approved just by typical building permit. We get a handful every year that the zoning officer will go through the plans with a fine-tooth comb and put right on the plans and uses a big red pen that says no cooking facilities, not a kitchen, not to be rented out. They'll often supplement that with a letter to the owner saying, here's what you can do, here's what you can't do. Uh, so this is a very similar situation. Uh, it just happened to come in with a, an associated grading permit for the pool.
And, and if you ever sell the house or mortgage the house, a lot of times those documents that Dave Keating put in the file get uncovered.
Yeah, municipal, yeah, titles, a municipal search.
Municipal search, not a title search. You're right.
Yeah, um, but I just wanted to make clear that, you know, we're approving, what we're approving and that there will still Jeremy, will be administratively, will that, will the enforcement officer still go through that normal process?
Yes, they'll still need it. They'll need, actually, I think the resolution calls out separate permits for the pool. Separate permit, permits for the pool house. So there'll need to be separate building permits for each, uh, which will be scrutinized by the zoning officer.
Okay.
And that I think is condition, I want to say I, but I could be wrong. Uh, condition F, separate zoning and building permits for the pool and pool house.
Right, the granting of this permit does not relieve the applicant of the responsibility of complying with all applicable rules, regulations and codes of other town, state or regulating agencies, separate, right, yeah, okay.
That's always in there. I think the thing you asked.
Important to note, because we're not approving at this point, those other parts of the project.
You're approving the whole site plan that came forth, but it's not, what you're saying is these conditions will not, will ensure that the pool house does not become a second dwelling unit. That would, that's the hang up. We're approving the pool and the pool house, yes. Okay. Anybody else? Jimmy, you okay? George, you okay?
I, I know I'm being painful. This is the landfilling and regating application.
Great.
You'll then have to submit the site plans to the various departments, right?
Yes, when they submit the zoning and building permits, there'll be one for the pool. Uh, and that'll show the pool equipment, the pool fence, all the details from the pool designer. Uh, you know, where the pool patio is going to go, all that stuff. Well, it starts in zoning. Dave Keating will make sure it matches this approval. There'll be a separate permit that comes in either before that or after that for the standalone pool house. It will show just what was shown to the commission, the exterior, the, uh, floor plans. If it's tied to the sewer system, we'll make sure it goes to the sewer services department. I think it's on sewer, so it's, uh, we don't have to worry about septic system. Yep, it's on sewer. Uh, the fire marshal would not look at this, just to, it's not an apartment or anything like that. And then it'll go to the building inspector to make sure everything is up to code, fire, uh, suppression, fire alarms, doors that swing out. Headroom and all that. So yes, both permits will be checked by Dave Keating as well as the building official. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you all set now? Yep. Okay, with that said, it's an emotion to approve as submitted. Jim Rand makes the motion. George Riley makes the second. Alls in favor? Five, nothing. The next guy's got their pool and the pool house. Fantastic. Uh, next item up. Uh, landfilling and regating application number five oh nine, William and Courtney Reed at forty-three Hillside Avenue. Again, they're building another, another house that's fixed in their backyard to put in terraces and patios. Um, and because it's, because it's more than, what, what's the regulation?
Twenty cubic yards or six inches. And in this case, it's also close to a property line. So those were the standards. Uh, in this case, it wasn't the volume necessarily, but it was the fact that it's right near the property line. It's such a small lot.
Yep.
Uh, they had an engineer put it together. Karen asked to find from Public Works, reviewed it. I think it's important when we talk about these regrading applications, that when the commission reviews these, it's an engineer that draws them up. And we always get a second engineer to check the work. And when, when we talk, we'll talk later on tonight in future meetings about flooding, drainage, that uh, these are highly scrutinized applications, even something that is simple, a smaller job as this is going to get scrutinized by two engineers.
I mean, the problem is, and we all know it, people build, you know, renovations on their house and it floods the guy next door. That's totally against the rules. Right, yeah. And that is, with Jeremy, I probably have people knocking on his door the last two weeks about this, or last week about this stuff. Questions, comments, typos, scripters errors on this one? Anybody find anything? Remember the engineer that, that presented to us, I think, um, I think it was a woman that did a great job. Okay, buddy, good. Uh, with that said, I take it, it's a motion to approve up submitted. Anybody? Kara Gately's making the motion. Jim, George Riley makes the second. Jeff Paul makes the third. All those in favor? All right, the reads are awesome. Next item up, um, very special permit application number two sixty-four B's and Boy site plan, Baywater ten twenty-five BRPLC Creps Choupey at ten twenty-five to ten twenty-nine Boston Post Road. This is that French guy from Yale, um, that's going to put, right, sells creps out of his bicycle. He's going to sell them in Derry and now where the old warm is. Um, he made a, he had a really cool accident and he made a nice presentation. Little small unit. It's going to add more vitality to our downtown. This guy, another place to be able to get lunch. Yeah, we had, if you look at item G, that's always something that comes up because it's going from, it was soft goods. It's going to restaurants. We have to make sure that they have enough dumpster area and unloading and unloading for garbage and recycling and all that stuff. Um, you know, it's next to other restaurants. It's right next to Playables, too. Um, so they're all going to work together on little sandbox. Um, overflow, no periphery service, it's limited parking. We hope people walk there and get their lunch. Um, those downtown lawyers. Kara Gately, you got to move your office downtown, man.
Soon, I guess.
You're off in the hinterlands. Questions, comments, typos, scripters errors?
No, I think this application's great. I, my, my question is not really so specific to this, but it's, it's in here and I'm we allow quick service restaurants in this zone, yes. Um, outdoor seating, um, after the executive orders, right, we have expanded, um, outdoor seating and sort of where that is permitted. And I think it's great. I think it's necessary and, right, I think it's welcomed. Um, just, do we think at some point though, given this sidewalk location, that there may be an issue with adequate room for people, um, to be able to navigate on the sidewalk if there's, you know, two or three places with tables and chairs? I just don't know the measurements. I, and I think, you know.
I'm going to get into that a little bit later in the chairman's report, but you're, you're correct. But we did, I took a tour over the month of August. About this stuff, but it is at, it's at Uncle's Deli. Then you cross the street. It's in front of Sugar Bowl. Then you go the next door. It's on Playables. You know, it's going to be in front of here. And next to the store to this, you have Grebes Pharmacy. And because it's all on my, you know, the same landlord, they put some chairs in front of Grebes Pharmacy. Way back when, we actually approved a indoor soda fountain for Grebes Pharmacy. Is it an issue? You know, this sidewalk and honesty in life is more narrow, if that's proper English, than it is across the street. At ten twenty.
But condition C, we, we, Kara, when we wrote this up, if you look at uh, we tried to make it as clear as possible that it's limited number of tables, which is two tables, two seats table. Or everything must be within three feet of the front facade of the building, just to address that issue. We wanted to make it clear that uh, we don't want people, you know, sitting on the end and pulling it further and further into the sidewalk, keep it right up against the building. So condition C, I think addresses your concern.
Yeah, that, that's sort of, I, and I, yeah, that's the condition that kind of where I'm thinking of this. Uh, especially because right is next to Grebes and pharmacy, certain population, you know, ne- you know, I, I'm just concerned. I just want to make sure that the sidewalk will continue to be safe. Anyone heart getting hurt or?
You're saying less agile people might be walking in and out of Grebes.
Including myself. I walk in and out of Grebes a lot.
Yeah, I trip all the time, too. Okay, with that said, it's a motion to approve as submitted. Kara Gately makes a motion. Anywhere a second? Jeff, do you have anything to add? I think Jeff.
I just have one question. I'm sorry.
Jeff, we didn't think about yet.
So it's two tables outside with two chairs each at each table or is it four chairs?
Like, two.
Two at each table.
Okay.
Supposed to be, the, the tables are supposed to be against the wall and the seats are on either side. It's not like, you know, your butt, your, your backside is, is towards the curb.
And there's twenty-four seats inside, up to twenty-four seats.
Yeah. Okay. Um, there was a motion made. There was a second. Now looking for a vote. All those in favor? Five, nothing. There you go. Fantastic, folks. That's done. Next one up for bid. Uh, we have Mr. Genovese again. Uh, special permit application number, um, three oh two A's and Apple, Baywater CFW LLC Compass Real Estate, fifteen Corbin Drive. Last week or last month, we approved a temporary location um, of Compass to go on the post road. This is the permanent building, which is going to be building H on the corner. Um, it's on the corner of the new road that's going to go in, backs up to the main, main parking lot that's back behind ten twenty. Um, we made some special current findings on this one because, um, this is again a real estate office inside a CBD zone. But again, this is different than the other CBD zone, which is across the street. There's a Corbin sub area of the CBD, so there's different set of rules. Um, that governed when, you guys remember when we did Sipsters one, but, uh, they wanted to put this next to Sipsters. Okay? Um, questions, comments, typos, scripters errors? Anything on this one? Again, Fred, I can't find any typos. I always check the spelling of my last name, too, and that's always correct. Yep, a permanent location.
Hi, Steve?
Yes, sir.
It's Jim. I, I, I honestly can't remember and nor can I find the map that showed which building was where and so on and so forth. So I don't know where H is, but it, it seems to me that the, that the new road went into the development, if I can call it that, in the vicinity of the present post office.
Correct.
You're right, Jim. It's across the street from where the post office is. It's, uh, if you think of this new building H, it will be, if you will, in the parking lot of what used to be the Tibbetts Real Estate.
Yeah.
The existing post office, roughly.
Yeah.
There's three, there's three buildings being built on Corbin. This is the middle building and it's the end cap that's closer to Old Kings Highway, furthest away from the post road.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, it says right on here, number fourteen, the commission notes that the site is approximately two hundred and seventy-five feet south of Boston Post Road, which is a main road going through the CBD. So it's, it's more than halfway down the block between Boston Post Road and Old Kings Highway. So it's sort of where Tibbetts is or was.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments on this one? With that said, I would take it, it's an emotion to approve as submitted. I think Kara just made the motion. I see you swiped your hand. You know, okay. Jim Rand, did you make the motion? Jim Rand read the motion? Looking for a second? Jeff Paul, you in the game? Jeff Paul's in the game. You got the second. Alls in favor? Five, nothing. There we go. Fantastic. Mr. Genovese's got his tenant. There you go. Okay. Next item up. Uh, we're on page two, sports fans. We're under, we did that in fifty minutes. All right, the next item on the agenda is to discussion of parking for multifamily housing and accessory dwelling units, ABUs and associate opt-up procedures and timing. Um, this has been going on for, I don't know, six months or something like that. After the, the state law, I think that's the proper word, was passed, um, on this item. If you remember, um, when we had the public hearing with Matt Blumenthal and Terry Wood. If you remember, when we had the public hearing with Matt Blumenthal and Terry Wood. What they did inside that big law, and I hopefully I'm saying it correct, Kara, is they put in opt-out provisions for some of the items that were in there. The two items that stood out to us as a tenant Darian was the opt-out provision for multifamily housing parking, which we addressed a month or so ago. And then the opt-out provision for accessory dwelling units all over town. Jeremy wrote a fantastic two-page memo, one on each item with some attachments. I'm gonna turn it on to you.
Sure, I think one of the keys here for everyone to realize is the way the law was written is parking is more our timing is of the essence in that because that goes into effect October first. And you really have a shorter timeframe to opt out. So I've been speaking with town attorney Wayne Fox about the timing on this and he said, you know, technically the planning and zoning commission needs to go first, but they can't really vote on anything before October first because it technically doesn't take effect. So you could see that the schedule really coordinates planning and zoning in the RTM. We gotta get before the RTM as soon as possible. And as George Riley has noted, they don't meet too often. So we're gonna aim for their October eighteenth RTM meeting. And so we're gonna work backwards from there is planning and zoning would need to have a hearing and vote on it before October eighteen. So and we keep really can't have that hearing before October first. So you see, there's a really condensed schedule, which will start with planning and zoning, having a public hearing on the opt-out on October fifth, a potential vote on the fifth or the twelfth and get that to the RTM by the eighteen.
But the more the not to cut you off, apologies, but the more important date for the RTM is the rules meeting on the fourth.
Right, we have to get to rules on the fourth.
If you're not, if you don't make it to rules, two weeks prior to their meeting, you're you're out of luck.
Right, so it's it's the timing. We're working off of rules of the rules committee. So really, I I mean, the commission has already adopted new multifamily parking regulations. So it's clear to where everyone's coming from that the commission wishes to opt out. So over the next few weeks, Fred and I will continue to prepare what the commission's done, their reason for opting out. Certainly, we have the minutes from the meetings where you've discussed it and we'll start putting this together. But again, parking needs to go first relative to accessory dwelling units. So I wanted to at least alert you to that calendar. With the hearing, you're gonna have a hearing on the fifth, a decision on the fifth or twelfth. If the commission decides to opt out, we then bring it to the RTM on the eighteen.
Question. With regard to the October fourth rules committee meeting, do you go to that or do I go to that or is that closed?
I don't think it's it's basically the rule purpose of the rules committee is to set the agenda.
Right.
So as long as we get them the materials they need, they can place us on that agenda.
So you have to get them the materials by October first. And when you send stuff to the rules committee, you're really just giving it to the town clerk.
Town clerk and Seth Morton. So it sounds very far away, October first, but being that today is the seventh. We got about three weeks to pull it together.
Okay. Good, Kara.
No, just because I mean, I understand the rules committee, right? They're getting these materials, but does it make sense just sort of as a courtesy to, you know, our fellow volunteers on RTM and on the rules committee to reach out, say, here's what we're planning to do, or maybe you guys have already done that or done it with the clerk's office. Okay, so that if there's additional materials they want or things that they need or think would be helpful to help them understand what we're asking of them because this is not usual, you know, and yeah, I just think.
What hap- what happens is mechanically is you put it to the rules committee, the rules committee puts it on the agenda. Then the rules committees assigns it to subcommittees to study it. The subcommittees have meetings and usually people like me or Jeremy or somebody goes to the subcommittee meeting. So guess what you just did? You volunteered to go to one of those subcommittee meetings? When somebody calls up like PZ and H or rules and regulations, they say, oh, can someone from P and Z come explain this to us?
Yeah, you're right, Kara. It is a little unusual. It's not something they've dealt with before.
I'm happy to, yeah. But I just think if there's stuff they wanted, I just know I like things in advance and maybe, you know, they, I don't know, maybe there's things they want in advance or they want some backup. But I'm sure the memo is gonna and all this stuff will be beyond.
But you're right. We've reached out once to Seth Morton and Amy Barsanti of PZ and H, who is the presumpt- one of the presumptive committee chairman.
Frank Frank.
Frank Kemp.
Frank Kemp. Yeah, you go to Frank Kemp's committee meeting, Kara.
Yeah, so we are being prepared and geared up, but I at least wanted to let you know that that's creeping up very quickly. And again, the state law really envisioned that going first relative to accessory dwelling units. They pushed that back to January twenty twenty-two.
So you okay with that? And I'm dead serious about about the meetings because Frank Kemp and the and the they what's they're like TG SNA, which is that's the guys like looks at the charter. They're gonna it's gonna be assigned to them. It's gonna be assigned to PZ and H. It's probably maybe public works. And what Jeremy does, Jeremy Fred put it into the rules into town clerk, town clerk makes copies. They send everybody in rules, then they make copies again. They send it to the subcommittee. So when they get their packet, they're gonna have it and then they call their meeting. You're up.
Yeah, so so you're right.
Everyone's good with that. Okay, next. Let's go to the next one. ADUs.
ADUs, there's a different section of the statute that deals with ADUs. That's section six, which you can see Fred was kind enough to include that in your packets. That doesn't go into effect till January one, twenty twenty-two for accessory dwelling units. Thus, we have a lot more time. And when I say a lot more, ninety more days to work on that, basically. So the schedules, you can see how we put that together is there's a little more work for the commission on that. And hearings in January or February, and then we're aiming to go to the RTM in May or June. So really, we have to complete it by twenty, the end of twenty twenty-two or you're stuck with what the state of Connecticut gives you. So I think that was important for us to note is we basically have one year to figure out if we're gonna get opt out. Get the vote of the planning and zoning commission, which must come before the vote of the RTM. And we must have that done by the end of twenty twenty-two or we have to accept the state's parameters.
So if you look at the top of Jeremy's memo, it says the planning has to consider it to whether A, B, or C. In my in my, you know, recommendation is B in the middle, which is allow ADUs, but permissible as compared to the standards permissible as compared to in a new legislation, public act. So we've all decided over years that that ADUs are actually a pretty good thing. We just want to be able to regulate them ourselves and put them in the zones that we want. And parking goes to that. If you look at the next two pages in this staples packet. The first one is straight out of the public act, which I guess is the law now. Yeah, which is parking is number five at the bottom. It says section five new effective October first. That talks about the parking. The easy thing about this is we already passed around parking regulations a month ago. That if you look at the next page, it talks about section six new effective January first, twenty twenty. And it talks about the stuff in there. And earlier we talked about Mr. Mrs. Hex Pool House. If you look at subscript three, set of a middle net floor area for the accessory property not less than one thirty percent. They spoke percent wrong of the net floor area with the principal dwelling or one thousand square feet, whichever is less. You know, so for argument's sake, I don't remember, but the Hex Pool House, I think is bigger than a thousand square feet. So this, this is above that. That's it changed it. Westport has a different number. Greenwich has a different number. I went to an apartment building today. The studio apartments are six hundred eighty square feet and they're really, really big. So that's something we have to figure out and debate on our own accord, if that's what we'd like to do. Okay, Kara.
Sorry, I'm so. And this question may be a Wayne Fox question. I know we can't move forward on voting to opt out. He until after the effective date. But under, as I read it, under the effective date, we shall designate zones that allow ADUs as of right effective January one, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, the next page.
Ought out after.
No, again, the next page talks about, yeah, we just didn't give you the next page.
There's a page fourteen that they 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 didn't sneak to us.
Okay, I'll get it. Thank you. Okay.
I I can, I mean, I I speak to Wayne once a month.
Yeah.
On top of this stuff.
No, I know that I. Yeah, I just.
Point well taken. Okay, so that was just an informational item, right?
Yes, no, no action needed. Fred and I are working behind the scenes, but we wanted to at least alert you that parking is going first. And we haven't forgotten about accessory dwelling units. We're gonna get to that in, I'll call it, early twenty twenty-two.
The next item on the agenda is a little bit similar, but it's discussion of regulations regarding cannabis and marijuana. Inside our packet, they gave us the the chairmates and staff gave us three documents about marijuana and cannabis regulations and how different towns are doing it. And if later, if you flip to the minutes, which you're gonna look at later, we already talked about these in the minutes at other important times. And maybe it was us talking about it, maybe it was this chairman's report, you know, saying stuff. But Jeremy, why don't you explain this to us?
Sure, you know, what we're finding, again, we've given you an office apology, policy and management memo. We've given you a memo from Westco, Western Connecticut Council of Governments and what the town of Westport has done. What we're finding now is communities are starting to decide how they wish to allow or not allow cannabis facilities. Now that the state is starting, has allowed them. What we're finding more and more is Fairfield County communities, Greenwich, Westport, I think even New Canaan are all at this point leaning towards a moratorium of saying, for the time being, no. I think they're generally going with two-year moratorium. As I've said repeatedly, the town of Darien zoning regulations have never allowed the sale of marijuana. That continues to be the standard in the regulations. Nobody has changed that. What the commission can decide to do, if you wish, is to formally put together a proposal for a moratorium, kind of like what Westport's done, and vote on that at an upcoming meeting to say, here's the background, here's the proposal, we're gonna put a specific section in our regulations to say we don't allow this and that will hopefully stop some of the calls from coming into our office.
Greenwich Greenwich did the same thing.
Greenwich did the same thing and New Canaan is about to do the same.
I think Greenwich actually passed a law that you can't put it in any zones in the town.
Right.
And the only other thing, which is I hate to hear our apologies, but the only other thing is there's the other piece of this thing, which is what are they called growers? What's the special word they use?
There's there's facilities which sell and then there's growers, which we've also not allowed.
Don't they call it growers, something?
They do, and the names escapes me.
It's a fancy word. The reason the growers, the people that grow this stuff, it has to be inside an industrial zone. Darien doesn't have an industrial zone, so we can't do that anyway. Go ahead, Jim, I'm sorry.
I think the the state breaks it down by five or six different separate uses, right? So the dispensaries, the hybrid dispensaries, a hybrid dispensary is a medical and recreational. Cultivators, delivery service, manufacturers, food and beverage. You know, pro- products. So there there's five or six different designations that that the state lays out in the new legislation and the new law. And the commission has 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 discretion as to, you know, what they wish to to allow or prohibit. You know, as as part of the regulations.
And as part of our research, I've asked staff to make sure we get an opinion letter from the chief of police. Okay, Jim Rand, you got a question, sir?
Yeah, I'm I'm focused on the description or language relating to the the local referendum. And I got some questions. I'm not sure whether anybody knows the answer, but.
Yeah, I don't think I think it go ahead, Jim, but I think in this case, we don't need a local referendum. It's kind of interesting because I saw that as well. But I I think in this case, it's a planning and zoning situation, but I'll double check on that. Fred, is that your belief as well? It's not a local referendum issue?
There was an. My belief is that the referendum would only apply if ten percent of let's see, at least ten percent of its electors petition for such a vote at least sixty days before a regular before a regular election. So ten percent of the community would would need to sign a petition that that would bring that referendum about.
But keep in mind, today is day sixty before the regular election and I've not heard of anything.
Oh, it's gonna be.
That was my point. I think we're at. Are we not precluded from even addressing this issue because we can't have a petition? I don't know what sixty days mean. I don't know who the electors are. I don't know what a regular election is, but assuming it's the same calendar as the federal. It's it's, you know, the second of November.
Yep. Well, I would say this, that the in the discussions we've had with the commission over the past few months, the sense that Fred and I have received is the commission wishes to continue the policy of not allowing this use in the town of Darien. And the question for you tonight is you can continue to do nothing and say that's policy of the planning and zoning commission. Or you can go ahead and ask us to put together a moratorium to vote on, which is specifically allowed by state statute, consistent with, say, what Westport or Greenwich has done. But we wanted to mention it to you. Nothing needs to be done tonight, but we wanted to start getting information out to you as we hear about more and more communities, again, down in this neck of the woods saying, yeah, for at least a year or two, we don't want to allow it. We wanted to bring that to your attention and see if you had any further guidance from us for us.
The moratorium would certainly give the would certainly give the opportunity to for the the commission to see how other similar communities to Darien, communities of a similar similar makeup or population are are perhaps dealing with with implementing this use in their communities from either dispensary standpoint or manufacturing standpoint. And to 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 take that information, to take that data that that, you know, we we receive over the next next year or two, if the commission if the commission was to implement this moratorium and make a decision as to, you know, which direction, which direction you want to go with it.
I would like to see you get a memo from Greenwich because with Greenwich wrote it on day one that they're not allowing. You know, there's certain communities, to be honest with you, that do want to use things in their community because it is a tax revenue issue. I think it's a little bit like liquor liquor store permits where there's only so many in the state. And if somebody wants it and they want the tax revenue, they don't have it, you know?
Okay, we can certainly track down what Greenwich did.
Yeah, I spoke to Margarita today and I forgot to ask her about that. All right, everyone good with that? Or you want to keep going that one, Kara? Go ahead.
I have I just have a question because I do. I sort of had similar questions and I'm a bit confused. And I think Jim did a really, you know, sort of hit a lot of the issues that I was thinking as well. Do we know of any municipality that has had a petition?
No.
Or ballot referendum?
Because I think I think what the example is, is that if someone started a petition to town of Darien and they got ten percent of the electorate, which I think is the population, then they could put it on the ballot, have a moratorium to vote for us to do it. And it's the time is the time is done.
Keep in mind, the law just took effect July first, so it's only been in effect about sixty-six days or so. So it hasn't been around long. And as Fred noted, there are some communities that are embracing it and others are not embracing it.
So you can embrace it without a referendum. Moratorium, the moratorium can be overwritten or whatever you want to call it. By referendum. Okay, so we're like California now.
Yes.
Well, this is new, right? This is not.
It's brand new.
I'm saying like referendums is not a New England, it's not a yeah, it it's sort of a new, I don't know, it's not new, but I'm not articulating well, but, okay.
I don't know how I feel about being compared to California, but.
Darien did a referendum twenty years ago to buy a piece of land and put a pool there, and it got shut down. And that's where Avalon is today.
Say that again?
It's, I'll tell you offline.
Okay, I think that's interesting. Okay, thank you. No, but if if any other memos from other towns would be really helpful because.
We'll continue to get those out to you, uh, information, Greenwich, New Canaan. Uh, they're all starting to work on it. Again, when it just took effect, nothing could be done before July first. But we'll continue to get uh feedback to the commission on this, but we wanted to, again, uh, bring it to your attention.
What's Norwalk doing? Um.
Okay, we'll find out.
Just because I, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, Bridgeport, Bridgeport wants them.
I know West Haven wants, you know, has is open to them. Um. Uh, yeah, I just, I'm just, and and I I'd be interested to know, like, are they just interested in dispensary, AKA places that sell to the public? Or are they also interested in cultivation, you know, where they grow things either inside or outside? And um how do they manage that? That to me seems, it all seems like there's a lot around it in terms of what zone they'll be in. Proximity to schools, um, yeah, and I know there's a time, like, I remember the police, you know, have a view on it. So, yeah, I'd just be interested in what other towns, you know, big and small are doing.
We'll follow up.
Yep. Okay, next item, chairman's report. I want to make this charted go fast. And I'll hit a bunch of different items that happened over the last little thing, and if you have questions, maybe we can sit kind of sort of those the end. First off, I would like to welcome Jeff Ball as the latest sworn-in commissioner. Uh, we voted him in on a special meeting earlier last this month, right? We did September first, yeah, September first, and I think he got sworn in the next day by the town clerk. So Jeff, welcome. Um, you have to wear your pin when you come to the meeting next time that says I'm a commissioner. It's very similar to the the part of the pen, okay?
Awesome.
Okay, chairman's report. Um, even though everybody was off for the month of August, we actually had a little bit of um a busy month. It was actually a kind of a fun month for me. I did a whole bunch of tours with um myself, Jeremy and Fred um and Jamie Stevenson around town, uh, a lot of our big downtown projects and other stuff. Downtown Darien, um, Jeremy, Jamie, myself toured downtown Darien with um two major property owner representatives to look at all the sidewalks and what's done, what's gonna happen. We kind of sort of finished at um I was focused around the playhouse. If you go by the playhouse, the sidewalk is done. Um, if you remember way back when, it actually started in nineteen fifty-one, where that plan was to make that sidewalk go from um, I want to say where Brooks Brothers is, all the way to um, all the way to um, Darien Sport Shop, and that's basically done. There's two pieces that are missing, and we're trying to figure out a plan to get those two pieces of sidewalk done, uh, in short order. It's part of private, it's part of um private property. And if you look at the competent conservation development, it's in there for the town to work with public private partnerships to um improve sidewalks in town. I also went to um Oxford School um about three weeks before this, the school was um was supposed to open. And when I went there, it was a major construction zone, and the parking lot out front was not done. Um, I immediately reached out to the powers that be on the school side of town and said, hey, you guys got that parking lot done? Um, and it was done about ten days later. And then went on a full tour of the site with uh Kip Koontz and um Duke Dene was there and walked around with the um project manager, his name is George, and that's my dad's name. We walked every single corner of the property, and I could not see Jim Rand's house out the back corner. Uh, but Jim Rand's house in area is um in very good shape. It's looking good. I've not heard any bad reports about um the busing and parking, but I was there the day after they already had the test runs for the um, for the bus loop going to there. And if you do look at the newspaper um that came out that week, there was a picture that says contributing photo. It had my name attached to it, but I did not take that picture. Um, but it was in the paper. Um, the other one I went to was um Highland Farms, the um, the new, the new, we talked about that a little bit, the track is in, everything's in, the parking lot's in. The only report I heard about that one is that the um handicap track's not wide enough because the little kids on scooters um are zooming around that that track. And there's other people like Jim Rand's wife walking on the track, and people go flying by around a scooter, and they have to jump off the road. Um, so we'll see what happens with that, but that thing's been well received. The about a week and a half ago, um Fred, Jamie and myself with David Genovese went over to twenty-six East Lane. Those two buildings are done, 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 done. Um, I think they were putting in like um closet rod bars and 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 chair rails and stuff like this in those buildings. They're missing a couple items there. There's a piece of cedar fence that's on backwater that they have to close off between the two properties. And there's a residential here. Oh, they also have to figure out the residents are in there. They got in, like, there's only I think there's twelve rooms. I know there's twelve rooms, and they got in over twenty applications for those rooms. Um, if you remember, we test part of the search committee to do it. Um, what's the woman that works at the human services office?
Ally Ransfield, she's not.
She's not helping at all, right?
Well, no, it was up to David and his professional manager, Ablis, to present to us the information. Uh, it's up to them to do everything and get the tenants.
Yeah, so they're they're sifted through those, they're sifted through those applications. Um, but you're probably gonna see that thing up, I'm guessing, before Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's kind of cool. There's also, um, and I have to speak to the developer, like the plants a little bit. Supposedly, the lighting in the back of the building at night, I did not go there at night, is brighter than they thought it might have been, and it might be the color of the light bulb. I'm not really sure. Um, we're gonna look into that a little bit deeper. The other one that I went by um and had a private tour of the federal project with Sarah Ford. Um, I got to climb up a ladder. Um, I banged my head against the top of the ladder, but I did have a hard hat on um and stood at the top of the building. The the building's going along pretty well. Um, it's a little bit, it's, I mean, I can say it's really behind schedule, but it's a little bit behind schedule because there's a lumber shortage. Um, and some of the wall systems, they put up some of the wall systems, which are wood uh a couple of weeks ago, and they were waiting on the wall systems for more stuff. I am pleased to report that um two truckloads of walls showed up today on site at seven AM. Um, and I'm gonna, I was there at seven oh five, and I'm gonna email at eight o'clock from Sarah Ford saying that the walls are in. Um, and I said, yeah, I already took a picture of the walls because I got them before she did, and she's from Boston. Um, so that thing's moving along pretty well. They they they, we'll talk about it a little bit, but I don't want to get too deep in it because I didn't get too much information. They had a little bit of a flooding thing again because we had another storm come flying in. You know, but that was faster than the first storm, but that's, you know, it's their parking lot, it's their parking garage, it's their flooding, they did great. Um, but that thing's moving along pretty well, and you're gonna see that thing get taller. They also had um, they did not, if you go up there, this, the the lobby's basically in the middle, everything to the left of the lobby. The concrete floors are poured, and the walls are going up. On the other side, they did not pour the concrete wall, the concrete flooring yet. Once they, once they pour that, they're gonna, um, you're gonna see um wood go, wood frame go up, going up on that side. That's kind of pretty cool. Um, the other thing that happened, I think it was a week ago, I had a dinner meeting with all the chairman of the planning and zoning commissions. Um, this five or six chairmen um came to Darien to visit us. Um, it was New Canaan, not New Canaan, I'm sorry, Greenwich, Ridgefield, Westport, Weston, then also Francis Pickering, who's the executive director of Westco came, and Jamie Stevenson came. Um, that's really a pretty cool group of people. You got, you know, some Wall Street lawyers, you got a person that's been doing this for years, you got a woman that was been chairman for twenty-five years. And that guy Francis Pickering is like an encyclopedia of state statutes and what happens around the country, the world. Um, and he and I got some um time after all the other chairs left, but one of the most impressive guys that that that's on it, and he helped a lot with this um testimony stuff, was the chairman of the Weston um planning zoning commission. His name's Ken, his last name escapes me. He was, he's a retired, I think, the number one, one of the number one law firms. Um, he had up the real estate department on Wall Street, and he does this for a living. If you had to hire that guy, he'd be be really, really expensive, and he does it for a living, and he's, the guy's just brilliant. What else? Um, storm damage. We get hit with another big storm again um two weeks ago, two days ago.
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. I was in this, I was, actually, yeah, I was out, I was out that night. Um, and I, and it rained by the time I got home, but I did go out. Um, I think Jeff Ball, one of our um firemen at Narroton Heights, or at Narroton, um, his fire station was all over the paper for rescuing people. I toured the properties, a lot of the properties affected on my own. Jamie Stevenson also um toured a lot of the properties on her own. We we personally, between she and I, we've discussed some targeted areas that we want to try to see if we can help out and things that um that the town could do. A lot of it is on private property. Um, and a lot of the issues that related to was renowned. The town was remapped for flood zones. I think it's, I think it was two thousand eleven or two, actually, I think it's two thousand thirteen, where when the town got remapped, everybody that was in a flood zone got notified. Um, a lot of those areas, um, they were notified, so people have known that their property is subject to flooding um for over eight years. Some people have never replied to us. Some people have, some people vacated their properties, and they're vacant today. Um, and the landlord and the owner knows that they're in flood zones. Um, but I think the town has to do its piece, whatever that is, um, in some way, shape or form. I've also traded phone calls with, um, also discussed with Eric Yostin, who is the chairman of the Environmental Protection Commission, also the Flood Erosion Control Board. Um, some people approached him. Um, he has some ideas of how to um help people get through this process. Some people's drivers got wiped up, his houses got wiped out, and there's something that the town can do. I also traded phone calls with um, with Craig Flaherty, who's the engineer that designed a lot of the stuff, and he was on the board when they did this flood mitigation plan way back when. Um, he's talking to Reese Hutchinson. Um, he was also on that committee when the flooding came up way back when, and also um I checked in with John Seeny, who was the chairman before me, and when we approved a lot of these programs, they were on it. So there's a lot of people that are really looking at this stuff. This happened before when Superstorm Sandy hit, um, and the P and C, the Prime Zone, Zoning Commission and the um Zoning Department of Appeals. One of the guys that was was really targeted was the Bay, and we expedited all those applications at the Bay. So people could remediate their houses as soon as possible. One thing that I would like to do is try to, um, and I don't know if I'm allowed to, or someone's allowed to, is waive the application fees. If someone has to, um, you know, file an application fee, it's like two hundred fifty bucks, or it's four hundred fifty dollars.
I spoke to Jamie about that today. She's authorized us to do that. So it's not really the application fee standing in people's way to fix up their and repair.
That's, and if you guys listen to the papers, um, or listen to the radio, DePlazio did the same thing um in New York City. But just for, just for the fact, it was my idea at seven o'clock this morning, DePlazio said it at like twelve noon.
Do you guys add one thing about that, about the flood damage? And, you know, I know a lot of businesses and homes have, you know, been damaged, and some people have flood insurance, some people do not. Um, but I know um the town is looking, and, you know, Jamie, you know, is, I think, leading the charge on this, and, you know, her board of, you know, and the board of selectmen, I'm sure are, you know, on board and and, you know, but flood damage information should be sent to town hall um to either Jamie, you know, I think it's emergency management department, or, you know, they can contact, you know, Fred or whoever to get it to the right people, or Jeremy, or Steve. Because Connecticut has not been declared, uh, a disaster or emergency has not been declared here in Connecticut or in Fairfield County, whereas New York and New Jersey declarations of disaster have been made. So I think any information regarding flood damage and damage to homes, businesses, and prop, you know, private property, if they could be, you know, presented to the town powers that they, you know, yeah, you know, whether it's Jamie or the, you know, Department of Emergency Management, a case is being put together to support um that there has been um, that there is sufficient damage um for that a disaster or emergency should be declared for Fairfield County, if not for all of Connecticut. So I think any of that information and evidence or, you know, anecdotal, whatever, can be presented to those people so that um a case can be made uh with evidence and sort of supporting data and, you know, pictures, stories, whatever, I think would go a long way towards that, and I think having the state declare that would help people, so.
One thing I want to mention is uh because of some damage in flour, water, salt, and meat.
I was gonna mention it next.
We've authorized some outdoor temporary outdoor sales.
Did, Jim, it it came up over the weekend again. There's certain businesses have been wiped out um because of power, whatnot. Jeremy has been granted and actually has still the administrative approval to approve some of these businesses to open up already, and I think he adds, he was working on Sunday, I think he did it on Sunday. They had Sunday, Jeremy granted the approval um to Groce Street Plaza for neat and Cafe Nero to open up as soon as possible with an outdoor.
Flour, water, salt.
Flour, water, salt, yeah, okay. Oh, I said Nero, sorry. Um, did open up an outdoor, um, moved the rest of basically outside, and as for the health department, the health department calls it a kiosk. Um, and then it's, we did the same exact thing when COVID hit. The other hoops that the applicants got to jump through is um David Knopf with with the health department, and then if they put up a tent, then it's gonna go to the building. But Jeremy's, you actually have a new title, don't you? Yeah, Jeremy got promoted, by the way, everybody.
The other thing I want to mention is, uh, like, fresh in my mind, Steve, we talked about COVID. There, we're still issuing COVID approvals, believe it or not. Our method at the corner of eight hundred Post Road, uh, has been put up a temporary tents. Uh, I was driving by there, people working out outside, but they want a tent, and Saint Thomas More uh also wants a tent for our meetings.
Really?
So just figured I'd let you guys know that those requests are still coming in.
Fellow Paul, let me call base, he called you, thank you. Thank you, fellow Paul. Um, so that's it. The only other thing I did not know the update on, but I want to give to you guys, and Jeremy, this is a question for you. You know, the corner of Narroton Avenue and um West Avenue?
I do know it.
Any any movement on that one yet?
We're waiting for the state of Connecticut to approve our grant.
Okay.
We've been waiting for thirty-two days.
Okay, because the cool thing that is is probably gonna happen is, remember, we talked about that, that starts at the gas station, which is now, I think it's a mobile. Um, this sidewalk is done from the mobile station towards the end, and then it stops um in that one spot that it picks up again, where federal put in all their new sidewalk. They're trying to get the jump over the wall that goes from West Avenue to Walgreens done by like a Uber first. Right now, it's it's halfway done, um, but it has been done on the other side. So the cut through, if you're going down West Avenue, you can cut through at basically the front, the exit of McGuara. Go up and over staircase, which is a really cool staircase, and get into the Walgreens parking lot. So if that happens, it gets you to be able to get a shortcut to the train station. Um, and this other project, which is the West Avenue one, is kind of cool. And also, the last thing is, if you go downtown, the Tibbetts Building's gone, the gas station's gone, and Dynamic Fitness is gone, and that's basically part of it. So they would just come forward. Um, that's it for me. Any questions on that? My wife wants me home soon, so we gotta go fast. Hi, honey. Um, no questions, moving on. The next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. One is July twentieth, and one is July twenty-seven. and one is July 27th. The first one is, um, pretty simple. The first item is nothing, that was the thing that was withdrawn. Then we talk about, um, the crepe store that we approved tonight. Then we talk about, um, the Corbin District application, which the first one was the proposal for the temporary one. And then the proposal for the permanent one.
This is, uh, Steve, George and Karen West.
Yep. Um, then you have the Mather Homestead, where we granted them the event for additional parking. Um, for that, um, for the, I guess we're gonna have a civil war or something like that. Then Great Island, we, we did a, made for Great Island where they subdivided that or moved the lateline revision. The Piedmont Club was the next item out here. And we have the resolution that's in there, so we can't touch that. Um, the next we have another resolution for, um, the senior center set, we're gonna, we're gonna raise that, make it into a park. Kind of sort of parkland, aggressive over. Um, the thing that's, that's important to me is page 13 of 19. The proposed amendments to the Darien zoning regulation put forth by Jeffrey Brown at 26 Peach Hill Lane. We had a lot of discussion on that one. And then after that, we adopted the resolution, which was, um, it was adopted with the amendments that we put in place. And Jeremy, we had to put all that stuff out. Uh, what else is in here? Tokenique Trail was something simple. The, um, Leroy House, they got an extension, the chairman's report. That's what I talked about, a bunch of different items that we just talked about again. Um, and multifamily procedures where it talks about the cannabis, other towns are doing it. Questions, comments, typos, anything in there? Jeff Ball, you could read them and tell them any questions, but you just can't vote on them because you weren't there. But if you found a typo of something. Anybody? Fred, you're killing me, man. These are perfect. With that said, I'm intending to motion to approve as submitted. George, I make the motion, looking for a second. And the second's gotta be Karen Gately. You're the only one that can make the second, Karen. It's gotta be you. All in favor?
One, two, three, three to zero with two abstentions, Jim and Jeff.
Next on approval, it's July 27th. Um, it talks about Woodway Coach Club, we talked, we approved that tonight. And Mr. and Mrs. Heck's house. We also talked about the, uh, wood deck that we approved again tonight at Presbyterian. The little addition of the wall that moved on 43 Hillside Avenue. Then we go into the zoning resolution, um, for the house that's over, um, in Tokenique, right? There was 20, Tokenique Trail that was put forth by Doug Devesta. We can't change that resolution. It's in there. Then you flip to again, at the end on page nine is, um, the Jeffrey Brown 26 Peach Hill Road application. We went through that, um, all that information. And remember, he had two separate, um, proposals for there. One was to change his zoning code, which we did on the 27th. And this was for the temporary, um, the temporary use of that. So that's a resolution, we can't change that. Then we have the other resolution, which is the compass, which is for the temporary location that we improved a while ago. It's a resolution.
Sorry. And I'm only, I don't know if it's a typo, but we're talking about the on page three.
Go ahead.
And so, right, Mr. Ken Empoli reviewed the floor paint for the pool house, confirmed there would not be any cooking facilities in connection with the structure. Uh, he said the pool house could be used for guests. I don't know why, you know, like, uh, for a very limited basis. It would not be rented out, would be 780 square feet. But weren't we talking about that it was much bigger than a thousand?
It was. I just, that's all time I had.
That's, that's the only reason why it stuck out at me was.
I thought it was bigger. It's bigger than my studio in the city, the apartment I looked at today.
I don't know.
Yeah, but it would fall in, it falls under, it falls under the state guidelines if we adopt the state.
All I'm saying is it's not under, only because we talked about it a couple of times tonight and then it just happened, it's, so it stood out at me. So on January 1, I, I guess, I don't know, I have to, I have to read all the rules. That's ADU's is January 2022.
Yep, we have time for that. Anything else to this one? Uh, what do we have to do? They watered the creps, all these applications, that stuff, chairman's report, same exact thing. It's where we said, thanks to Jen Leahy, um, who's standing here tonight. Uh, for a minute. Okay, with that said, any questions, comments, typos, scruples, errors? Nothing? We're good. The commercial to approve as submitted, and it's gotta come from George Riley and Karen Gately again.
George Riley, Karen Gately's second.
All in favor? Great.
Three to zero. Two abstentions, Jim and Jeff.
Hey Jeff Ball, anything you want to add about the flooding from your perspective through the fire department? Seriously?
I've never, well, I mean, I don't know what the, the flood plan looks like or what was, what's come out in the last eight years. Uh, but I've never seen flooding and water moving as quickly as it did on West Avenue by the Boy Scout cabin.
Uh, I didn't know that.
Um, we got, uh, we got dispatched for a family of five, uh, all adults. Directly across the street, the current was so strong, it was put, I mean, I couldn't get a, one of the boats that we have, that's got 110 horsepower on it, into reverse and to get a backwards propulsion to get us out of a area that we're in. One of the, uh, one of the more scary, uh, rescues I've done probably in my, uh, in my career here in Darien, on a boat.
Thank you for your service, man. I saw some of those pictures, it was floored.
I mean, the, the stuff, the stuff in front of, of Land Rover, I mean, that's just been like that for a while. Uh, people think that if they can go through, we pulled four people out of there in two different cars. Um, but this stuff on West Avenue, I, I've never seen it like that.
You had to go in a boat on West Avenue to save a family of five adults.
Correct. And we had to do it, we had to do it in, we did it three times, cause you can only put so many people in the boat. Um, just based, I mean, they had, so it was five adults and a dog.
Well, that's really scary.
It comes, that, that watershed, Jeff, it, that floods, you know, Naroten, it floods Heights Road, which is kind of sort of where it used to be the Comptangler, now it's Sanders Cleaners and Valvallas and all that stuff. That water basically comes from way up high in the watershed, which is kind of like Duquesne. It comes all the way down. And it goes under Magua Field, and it comes out at Magua, and then it goes underneath the road. That's what they put in the two new storm drains there. And it goes into the million or a million two border tank underground. Then it goes underneath Heights Road, underneath the railroad tracks, underneath a 95, and eventually makes it out to, you know, Florence. It comes from a long way away. That's one. I didn't know it flooded there, though. Wow, that's crazy. Well, thank you seriously for your service, Jeff. That's great stuff.
Welcome.
With that said, 9:14, looking for commercial to close. Right, we're done.
We're done.
We're done. Jim Rand. All in favor? Aye. I have nothing, means a turn. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.